Good evening and welcome to the Town of Beattyman Planning Board this evening. Thank you for coming. If you'll notice, the emergency exits are here, there, and in the back of the hallway. And if you will all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And just please remain standing for a moment for our first responders and armed service personnel.
And for the people of the Ukraine.
Amen. Thank you. Please have a seat. All right. For those of you that are aware, this evening, we have a public hearing on the agenda. And there were some administrative issues that occurred, where we're required to do a mailing and reach a certain number of people. And unfortunately, that didn't occur. So we're not going to open the public hearing this evening because it wouldn't be proper. We are looking to have the public hearing at our next planning board meeting. And notification will be sent out again incorrectly that time. Dan, is there anything you'd like to discuss before?
Well, if you have any questions for the applicant, or if the applicant wants to make any comments to us, we can still make some use of the time.
Sure. Okay. Would you like to do that? Would you like to discuss anything with us at this point? Anything for us to consider?
I just wanted to clarify what outside of the mailings, because I know we got to get, you know, lighting plan put together, landscaping, a couple of minor issues on here, but if there's anything major that you're still waiting for, I know there's some topography that I'll get from the civil engineer, but if there was, what are the major points that we really have to go over?
Sounds good. Yeah. Would it be appropriate at this time to bring up?
Mr. Chairman, so basically, there were some deficiencies in the site plan under code 155-59. That was addressed by the town engineer in his letter. And he noted the deficiencies. That has prevented a meaningful review by county plan. And that could be addressed. If I could speak to Dan on that, that would move this application along. But we did discuss the applicant going for the ZBA next week to try to get a flavor for how they're going to, if they'll be receptive to certain variances that they're going to be seeking. So it wouldn't be a total loss of time in the interim to get that. Because this is a coordinated review, seeker would still have to be determined by this board first before the ZBA could act. So you would have to go back to the ZBA after that. But at the next month's meeting, if you can make this timely submission, there'll be a full application for this board for consideration. And hopefully, we'll have a 239 letter from county planning department. And, you know, we can, the board will be able to take some sort of meaningful action on this application.
Okay. All right. And you'd like a motion made to that effect. So I'll make a motion, and I move to direct the applicant to address and satisfy the comments of the town engineer. October 20th, 2022, review and comment letter. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Fay Garrido, seconds. Roll call vote, starting with Peter.
Peters in favor.
John Fristaci in favor?
Aye.
Fay Garrido in favor?
Rob LoPain in favor?
In favor. Okay, so the motion's been unanimously approved. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
In his review, in Dan's review, he mentioned about the sidewalks.
Yes.
And we've always, the last time we had issue when we did Dollar General.
Right.
So would it be wise at this point for the board to discuss that and discuss it with the applicant?
We certainly can. Yeah. Is there some comments about, because you're in the town center, we realize that there aren't any existing sidewalks right now there. Our ambition is to have continuous sidewalks in the town center designation of our town. With the Dollar General, we had offered them two scenarios. One, to build the sidewalks during the initial development of the project. And then the other scenario was for them to escrow funds at a rate of appreciation. Is that correct? Am I saying that correct, Dan?
I'd have to look at the record to see what, I think we had an agreement with them that if either parcel on the left or right of them was developed, then we would have multiple parcels in a row, and they would both have to do sidewalks.
And then they would add the sidewalks at that time.
And I think that they provided some sort of an agreement that...
An agreement.
Yeah, of some nature that would allow us to tell them, it's time to build the sidewalk, and they would go do that.
So something like that would be written in the resolution, and then when it would happen, we would make that request.
Right.
Right? So those are the two options. Does the board have any comments or questions?
I do.
You do? Please.
Well, thinking about sidewalks, parcel is adjacent to where it comes from Farms and across the street from the library. So would it be feasible at this time? And I realize that Sparrow's Nest is not going to be a...
Destination?
Well, a public restaurant or anything like that. But I would think that if sidewalks are going to be required, now would be the time to put something like that in during construction because of the access, shall we say, from the library over to Cumberland Farms, which would tie in with the rest of the town center. If it's felt that the sidewalks aren't needed, then I don't, I think that the board should so designate so that there's not a need in the future, because you can decide where the future is today in relation to Sparrow's Nest, the library, and the town center Cumberland Farms, Route 55.
I mean, I believe the need is there, considering Town Center Park and the fact that, you know, Cumberland Farms is there, and children, and the library, and the possibility of future development.
I just pulled up the parcel access, and there is a parcel in between Sparrow's Nest and Cumberland Farms, actually.
Ooh. What size?
It's two and a half acres, and there's about 260 feet of frontage.
Right. Okay.
Vacant right now, yeah.
Okay.
Chair, I have a question on another subject.
Please, Ms. Garrido.
Only if it's appropriate to go to a different subject, just briefly. There's a note that the applicant should be aware of an application before the planning board on the property east and may wish to coordinate well location. To, what degree are they responsible to do that?
It's just a...
Courtesy?
I put it in there as a courtesy to an extent. I looked at the plans that were provided on that and where the proposed well is now, and the 200-foot radius of control is actually still compliant with where he's got his concept septic system for now, so.
Does he, he doesn't have anything approved yet?
No, I mean, it's, I mean, at the end of the day, it's the race to goods there first, I guess, but, you know.
Okay.
And we've already started those discussions.
Great. Thank you.
Yep. And if I may, I just have a couple of comments on the sidewalks.
Thank you.
I just wouldn't want that to hold you up.
Yeah.
So I wouldn't want that to be a condition, because I don't think that's fair to you. That's my opinion.
So with the sidewalks, we have a couple of concerns. One would be, like, if this is the only property, you know, I mean, just like Peter said, it's not a public building, not like there's going to be people going in and out of it all day long. But if we were to put the sidewalks in, that would be the only property, and correct me if I'm wrong, that would be the only property with sidewalks in that area. And then it becomes like a liability issue if we have sidewalks that go to nowhere. And that's just something that, you know, Sparrow's Nest just does not want to take on. Now, in the future, yeah, if, you know, like the parcel that's to the east of us, if they go in and now we need sidewalks, we could always do it in the future. But at this point, right now, like the land that's adjacent to us and now behind us, if they're vacant for right now, we're the first ones in, you know, we could always do it later, at a later date. But for right now, if we could just hold on that until those sidewalks actually go somewhere.
But then, in your plans show where the sidewalks would...
Sure.
Would be, and then, did that, something for the future. Also, Dan, in his comments, mentioned something about utilities.
Yeah, so we've taken a look at what we have on file with regard to water and sewer easements, because in Town Center, we've been constantly trying to figure out whenever there's a parcel here, if there's an easement that makes sense for water and sewer potential future lines. So in this case, I think it would be similar to where the sidewalk would wrap around. So maybe we could do some sort of an easement that encompasses an area with sidewalk and has the potential to put in water and sewer in the future if we ever get to that point.
Sir, when we have sidewalks, do we create a district? I mean, who maintains these sidewalks?
It's the onuses on the property owner.
And if they don't?
Then it's an enforcement issue.
Is that spelled out as to how they're to be maintained?
I think, I think we looked into this in the code recently. I can pull it up and get an answer for you.
Fine. Okay, you can get it.
I remember reviewing that with Dollar General.
We may have a town law that requires the adjacent.
We had clarified that.
Right. Yeah. That's quite common in the law.
Right.
And then it would become a liability issue that they would have to deal with in the event of a slip or a fall or that sort of thing.
But you want to reserve an easement area for the water and sewer on the property, or don't you look for that in the right of way?
More than likely, we would, because of separation requirements, we would have to use some area that might be outside of the right of way. So we'd probably be looking for an easement that's partially into the property as well.
Could it be the sidewalk?
Well, you know, we wouldn't want to rip up new sidewalk either to put in utility, so it would all be in coordination.
So is your comment, then, to ask them to allocate a space for the potential future water and sewer?
Yeah, and I think I can work with them directly on that to get to that point. That's something that, in terms of seeker and public hearing, doesn't really matter as much, but by the time we get to the end of this process, we would want to have that.
How much width does that take?
Depends. So you have to have 10-foot of horizontal separation between water and sewer, and then you want to have at least some 10 feet on each side of a water or sewer line so that you can have construction vehicles to access it, side cast material, do whatever you've got to do to maintain and operate them.
It could go right down the center of the street. A lot of, I've seen a lot of villages where that happens.
Yeah, it's preferable not to rip up a street to have to put it in.
I understand that, but it happens all the time.
Yeah.
Regarding the sidewalks, did we require Dollar General to do an easement area for the future placement of sidewalk when it becomes...
We did.
They're going to, am I wrong in that they chose to develop the sidewalks?
Yeah, I kind of thought they said they'd do it, right?
It was my impression.
I'd have to go back to the record, to be honest with you.
My memory.
I can't remember.
I think they made the choice to do it.
They made the choice to do it, is what they did. Yeah, is what my memory serves me.
Well, my opinion would be to give them the same option as to whether they want to do it now or do it in the future, but if they're going to choose to do it in the future, they need to allocate an easement area. And I don't know how we solidify their commitment to do it in the future. That was some kind of resolution or some kind of agreement they signed, they would sign, I guess?
Yeah.
It would be in the resolution.
Resolution, and we'd have some sort of an agreement, yeah.
Yeah, our resolution doesn't, I don't know if that compels them in the 10 years down the line. We tell them, we, the planning board had a resolution 10 years ago, unless, if they're already owned and built, they're not compelled to do it. What compels them to put it in in the future?
But if it's part of, if it's part of the final plat...
Right, so...
Then it's stated, and the obligation is there, I would think.
In the plat, right. But under this scenario, they're already built, right? They're, 10 years go by, they have no plans to do any improvements to the, to their property, and new owner's there. And then we finally decide, hey, let's put them sidewalks in, because maybe the adjacent property's doing it, and all the other properties. They're just people in a property who have no business other than they're operating their current business, they're not before the town for anything. What compels them to say, yes, I'll do it?
The code enforcement officer or the building inspector?
Is that sufficient?
But they'd have to have a reason.
Well, that would be, that would be the...
The agreement.
Right.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the information that is on the signed plat is basically a legal form. Am I correct?
Yeah, the site plan itself is enforceable by the town.
And usually, that comes into play when they come in for an application in the future. Someone like our code enforcement officer or our town engineer will review the plat, it's just part of the procedure, and then you'll say, oh, here's that note on the plat. I know you're here for an accessory use apartment. You got to do this thing also.
Right.
But if they're not coming into the town for any reason, they're going to say, aren't they going to say, look, I'm just here operating my Sparrow's Nest, I don't...
That's why I think you have to have an agreement that says when, you know, a reasonable amount of time after we notice you that you have to put the sidewalk, you have to have it done. So I don't think we, we wouldn't be saying to them, hey, you have to start the sidewalk tomorrow. You know, I think you give them a reasonable amount of time of head notice.
Yeah, I'm just wondering what the legal tool is. So the legal tool would be...
That's for him to...
With the agreement.
Explain like a legal tool that you can use to enforce a sidewalk construction at a later date?
Well, there could be a bond set aside to ensure the performance, like a performance bond.
Right.
Yeah, that's probably the best tool to use.
And then if you have the easement area and they choose not to do it, we call the performance bond, we could do it ourselves.
Yeah.
Okay. Is it, I mean, I don't think...
The performance bond, in this case, would have to be renewed. You know, I think it's only here for two years, so hopefully, it wouldn't, you know, have to be renewed too often, but it's possible.
So my concern isn't with you guys, you're clearly honest people, and when we're ready to ask you to do it, you would probably do it.
Absolutely.
What I'm worried about is the person after you. I'm hoping there is no person after you.
There is never.
But that, you know, to say never is, you know, and so if there's someone after you, and this is, geez, I didn't read the fine print, I didn't know I was going to have to put a sidewalk in the future, they can be very combative with us. And we need some tool to protect the town to be able to do this, because we could, there's the, right now, you're worried about the potential of there being only one sidewalk. There's the potential of being sidewalks on all sides of you and not on your property, and that's what we're concerned about. You look like you have a question for me, Pete.
No, I think we're covered.
Yeah. And snow removal is a responsibility of the property owner.
So I guess it's just that you need to make the choice of either you want to build it now or set aside an easement for the future installation and a bond, a performance bond.
I just have one more question regarding the level of disturbance.
Yes.
Actually, it's for Dan. So I know this has been kind of like a sticking point, because I know we've been teetering on crossing over that acre threshold. So is there a number that you and the county, you think, would be comfortable with, that we can possibly like back into?
In terms...
Like the level of disturbance? Like if we were at like point nine, as opposed to point nine six?
You know, this has been a difficult issue all the time. Whenever somebody is legitimately right around that one acre, and we've had conversations with the DEC on the pass in this, and they basically say, use your best judgment. They don't really give us a, but they have said, if it's really close, you're better off getting the coverage and doing the work. Doing the work in this case would be permanent stormwater controls, though, so there's, it ends up turning almost one acre into probably 1.3 acres of disturbance, because you have to have stormwater management and everything else now. So it's a, it's a fine line that you're dancing around on, on that disturbance right now.
I just wanted to know if there was like a number, because I mean, I've been working with Sparrow's Nest, we've been trying to get that down.
No, I mean, the engineer's an honest guy, and I mean, I looked at his limited disturbance, and it's very close to the actual grading, and, you know, it's tough to build a building when you only have 15 feet on every side of it that you're saying you're disturbing. And, you know, it's, in terms of, in terms of heavy equipment wrapping around a building, a lot of times, you're getting compaction, and that's one of the big problems with stormwater. You don't want to compact the soil and then just leave it in that state, so, fine lines.
Can I interject at this? Would you mind if I interjected?
Yeah.
So, I mean, the number is one acre. It's clear in the law what the disturbance is. So all I could say is, if you're going to be very close to that one acre, we should probably put on the plan, like, in cases like this where you're very close to that one acre, it makes it a hard enforcement issue for us, for our code enforcement, because now they got to make sure that you don't go beyond that line. And so if it's going to be very close to one acre, you're entitled to go point 999, as far as I'm concerned. But I would say if you're going to be that close, we should show construction fencing at the limit of that disturbance, because that'll give our code enforcement officer the ability to enforce that. This way, if the contractor goes beyond that fence, he's going beyond the one acre disturbance.
Yeah, I put that in my comment letter as well.
That's in your comment, all right.
Yeah, I thought the same thing.
I promise I didn't read that, that I...
No. You're a very smart guy.
But yeah, I think, because we've done that in the past, I think that issue's come up in the past.
Yeah, I'll tell you, the contractor yard was like point 98, and we did the same thing. We said, you got to delineate this for construction.
Yeah, let them put a fence up, and then our inspector's just going to have to be on top of it, make sure they're not going beyond the fence.
Which is completely fine, which we can do, because I know I'm preaching to the choir, because we have to go for SWIP. It's more time, which we're, the clock is ticking, and it's more money, which is, you know, just trying to...
I don't blame you. Try to stay under that acre. That's the best thing you can do, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I just keep it as a placeholder, because as the plan develops, and there's still some things changing in there, and I mentioned some grading issues and that, that the engineer has to take a look at, so.
Yeah, I got to talk to Willingham about that.
So just, you know, we just got to keep that in mind as we're moving forward.
Okay. All right, so moving forward, we can go at least apply to the ZBA just to get like their feedback, their initial feedback? Okay. And then we'll have all these comments addressed by the end of the month?
Yeah, so middle deadline is the 31st for the November meeting, so.
Do they need to make a motion about the public hearing in November, then?
Yeah, direct the applicant to publish and notify all, you know, people within 500 feet.
All right. So a motion to direct the applicant to notify everyone within 500 feet diameter of the subject property?
For a public hearing.
For public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Unanimously approved. Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
See you guys next month.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, oh, just, we're in between secretaries, for the public to know. So all of our meetings are recorded by the famous Peter. And he puts them on, is it, not...
It's on YouTube, yeah.
Actually, people have been asking, is the town now has a YouTube channel accessible on the front page because it also gives you closed captioning and multi-language should be designed?
Oh.
So that's in the upper right corner of the town website. And then Town of Beattyman also has a slot, a podcast on Wednesday mornings, where you broadcast away from meetings on Wednesday mornings.
What channel is that?
I think it's your five, Comcast five.
On Wednesdays?
Wednesday is the slot. Or she actually puts it on the order, because there's not much content on that channel there.
Okay.
So you'll probably would see Town of Beattyman's lot.
Very good. All right. And...
And this is your feed up like tomorrow?
Okay. On Venmo? Not Venmo, it's Vlog.
No, we use Vlog.
You don't use Vlog? Okay, just YouTube.
There is still a little Vlog channel that folks need to get.
Okay.
Our meetings, they're still there.
Okay.
And it's, could have said, even change it, that says our kind of meetings, so if you need to go back for anything, it's still there.
Everything is accessible from the town website. So these will be transcribed eventually and put into minute format as soon as we can find a secretary. So that brings us now to the next item on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, before you do that...
Sure.
You didn't review the minutes.
Well, they're, right, so...
Since September 2022, you're saying that you didn't get a copy of that?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
And they're available. We're going to be doing that once we resolve this issue.
I see.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is a discussion with the Trust for Public Land, Gray Palo Subdivision. Depot Hill. Jeez.
I'm Sarah Richardson from Inside Engineering, Surveying and Landscape Architecture, PC, here representing the applicant, the Trust for Public Land, on the subdivision of Depot Hill. This is a two-lot subdivision. Lot one is 12 acres and will remain with the current owner and current use. The remaining 125 acres on lot two is to be purchased for, by the Trust for Public Land and ultimately conveyed to the DEC. Since the project was last before you, we've responded to the majority of Mr. Kohler's outstanding comments. We've requested a waiver from chapter 130-20A6. We believe we've shown most, if not all, existing features on the site, and request a waiver from showing additional detail on the plan. We understand there's a draft resolution prepared for the board to vote on tonight, and I'm available to answer any questions. Thanks.
Could I make a suggestion? That that, not only this one, but anything in the future that is on display for the board, also be positioned in such a manner that it can be covered with the camera?
Oh.
Because if I was sitting, if I'm sitting out there in the audience, I don't have a snowball's idea of what is being discussed. And the same would hold true for the televised part of the, of the meeting.
Makes sense.
So could we take that and shift it in such... So could we take that and shift it in such a manner? Or maybe the camera has to be moved to something, or maybe it can be at an angle so that we can see it here and they can...
I can just...
Sure. Yeah, if you want to pan to it and remain still on it for a few moments.
You can't see it though.
I got my map.
But you've got to reply.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We got the map.
That way then it'll allow somebody to actually zoom in and take a still shot from their computer if they... Okay. So were you done, Sarah?
Oh, excuse me.
Or did you... Were you done with your comments?
Yes, yes, I'm done.
Thank you. Okay. And Dan, is there anything other than what you'd like us to address in regards to the waivers and such?
Yeah, no, we provided a draft resolution of conditional approval today.
Right.
And within that resolution, you would be granting the waiver request from 130-20A6, granting preliminary plat approval, and then granting conditional final subdivision plat approval, which would be valid through, I believe it was March, let's see, April 18th of 2023. So they'll have 180 days to satisfy the conditions of the resolution to get the map filed, and that's the actual approval itself then, but this would be a conditional final approval.
Now, are there any other conditions actually to satisfy at this point?
No, everything that's remaining is in the list of conditions that start on page four of the resolution. Those would be the conditions that would need to be satisfied before the plat would be signed by yourself.
Right.
And then there's also just a few follow-up conditions after the plat is filed. We need copies back here, et cetera. One of those issues is also going back to the town board to discuss that potential waiver of the rec fee.
Right.
Which I don't know if you've appeared before them for the Camp Luddington, which is the same thing in concept.
Okay.
So...
Yeah, I know we've noted that and are aware of.
Time's ticking on that one.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion to grant conditional subdivision plat approval as described here.
May I have a second or an amendment? Give us a second or any second. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
By name because the secretary is going to have to...
Very good. Roll call vote?
Hold track, favor.
Okay, John Fristachi, aye.
Abbott Antwano, aye.
Grito, aye.
Lo Pain, aye.
Very good. And it's been unanimously approved.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Is that about the preliminary plat? Would you want to go forward with preliminary plat and the waiver as well, right?
That was all within the draft resolution.
Okay.
So that's what you just voted on, I think, was that draft resolution.
Thank you.
I believe.
Okay, and the next item on the agenda is the lot line adjustment, Pleasant Ridge Road. Is... Oh.
There's one on the right.
There we go. Good evening.
Good evening.
Did I misspeak? Lime Ridge Road?
The agenda says...
Yeah. What did I say?
No, the agenda inaccurately says Pleasant Ridge Road.
Okay.
It's Lime Ridge Road.
So that's Lime Ridge Road.
I don't have a diagram, but basically what we're doing is we're taking a 20-acre piece of property and a one-and-a-half-acre piece of property, taking four acres off the 20 and adding it to one and a half. And that's all we're doing, is just making my lot a little bigger and Nancy's a little smaller.
Okay.
And then we passed there, and then we reviewed and by Dan's group earlier, we got a memo this morning that the few that think it's a surveyor that's ahead to the map. Other than that, it's pretty straightforward.
So you're making the 20 acre smaller and then the one-and-a-half acre?
Twenty's going down to 16, and the one-and-a-half, one and a half, so it's a five man.
Okay.
Nancy's selling and moving, and we want to protect a couple of lots that potentially have been developed, and people would be driving by our house to get to the lot. So we decided that we don't want to do anything with the lot, we just want to have it on our property, being instead of her property being. So that way, future, if it sells again and somebody wants to do something, then we've got our protection, kind of the plan of purpose for doing it. And then there was a couple of things that we said we could potentially waive, put on the map, or something like providing a topography since we're not doing any building, providing the soil boundaries, providing the trees, the tree, and then providing a topography on the preliminary approval. Then I have a little letter that I drafted up asking for that, and do you sign it and turn it in?
That's efficient.
Okay.
Yep. So you'd want to do that. You can either do that early, or you can wait until your surveyor revises the map a bit, because you can add some of those things on here that we need on the map as well, so...
I got it here, we just need to sign it and turn it in whichever way. And do I turn it in to the Storm...
Colleen.
Just to use...
You can give it to Colleen at the building department.
Okay. All right, and I haven't heard from Bob yet, so I'm not sure if he's going to make the 31st deadline, because he said if we can make the 31st deadline, then maybe we could go for preliminary hearing, the full hearing, and have everything done in the next month?
I would think so. I mean, this is a very simple application. The biggest thing I need to see on that map would be where the septic systems are, so I can make sure that the septic systems and the wells remain on the lots.
Oh, yeah.
Where the lands are being transferred. I'm sure it is.
The ones behind my house and the other ones 500 feet on the other side of Nancy's house, so...
Yeah, I heard it's like three or four acres.
Agreed, but you got to show it. So that's all. We just need to see it on the map, and then that way we can...
I think they're on our listing plan or wherever we have, so we can just show the map on...
Yeah, if you can get that to Bob, then he can put it on his map and then take care of some of these other things on there.
Most of it, just like adding a bunch of notes to the...
A lot of it is, yeah. Yeah.
Okay. So you'd like us to move forward with the items?
So, yeah, this is a type-two action in accordance with SEAKER, according to everything I've seen. It's a lot line realignment, simple lot line realignment, so the latest SEAKER amendments allow that to be a type-two action, meaning that you basically end the SEAKER process right then and there. There's no specific analysis you need to do, it's ministerial, so... So normally what we do is we ask that the planning board declare it as a type-two action just for the record.
I'll also make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Fay Grito, seconds. Roll call vote?
Peter, in favor.
John Fristachi, aye.
Abbott Antwano, aye.
Fay Grito, yes.
Rob Lo Pain, aye.
Are unanimously approved.
So normally what we would do is we have a sketch plan approval process, but the information that's required in 130-18 isn't on the map yet, so technically we really can't give a sketch plan approval. I've done a lot of the research on it to check a lot of those things. I'm not concerned about it, but until those items are on the map, we can't do it. But what I thought would be helpful to this applicant would be, and to help streamline it and get it out of the process here, would be to schedule a public hearing for the November meeting, have them resubmit with the answers to all those things that we need, and then at that meeting, you could maybe consider sketch plan, preliminary, and also conditional final, assuming that there's not any public comments that come out of it that would throw a monkey wrench in and make us reconsider something, or make them have to make plan changes of some sort, so... So that would be the plan, would be the November 17th meeting.
What are your thoughts, Board, here?
I take no exception to what they want to do. It's a simple application. I don't see any reason why we can't move it forward.
All right, agreed?
Agreed.
Okay, so then a motion to schedule the public hearing for November 17th, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay, so there's some advertising and some certified mails you have to do for subdivision. It's every property within 250 feet of the entire two parcels, so...
Yeah, we got a list from Colleen, and we...
Okay.
Many people, we have to send their letters, send it to the district attorney.
Yeah.
You got it.
I can do that anytime after today, right?
Yeah.
And then Dan will need the affidavits before the public hearing.
And proof of the mailing.
Proof of the mailing.
And that's from the...
Right. Very good, thank you. It's nice meeting you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you. And the last item on the agenda, pre-discussion Bezuto subdivision 110 Frog Hollow Road.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Brian Hilton Brand, the engineer for the project. I'm joined tonight by the Bezuto family, the owners of the property. I do have reduced-sized printouts. You guys have your screens up, but I'm sure...
We have them up, but not on.
I think we have.
Oh, yeah.
Do I have one of those?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, I mixed mine. Okay.
Do you want mine? Drop.
Okay. Thank you.
I know the...
You know it? Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so this is on 110 Frog Hollow, kind of towards the end of Frog Hollow, right before the sharp turn. The Bezutos own a few lots. There's this 85-plus acre lot down below that's flooded by the rail trail, and then they own the next lot uphill of that into the woods. What exists now on this, of the lot we're requesting the subdivide, is an existing house, an existing trailer all on the same lot. There is a stream and wetland system that traverses the property. The rest of the property is pretty open with meadows and woods. What our plan is, is to create two new lots that's shown on this sketch. Both will... The existing house will remain, the existing driveway will remain. The new lot number two will be created to sort of formalize that lower, that lower area. And then the third lot is, will kind of traverse the property toward uphill, towards the rail trail, to create lot number three. The tricky part we're running into is that it's an expansive amount of property, but it all necks down to a limited frontage area along Frog Hollow. So that is something we'll have to discuss and overcome, most likely with the zoning board to get a variance for the frontage. But ultimately, we feel that this, you know, given the amount of acreage, that creating two new lots isn't that substantial of an ask, but we certainly want to discuss that here tonight.
Hey, Beck?
Yes.
We had something like this already before the zoning board. I don't remember whether you were on it or not, but it had to do with the trailer when they first purchased the lot and wanted to build the house and back?
With the trailer you're talking about?
Yeah. I don't remember the details, but do I know there was a discussion that involved that trailer?
Where they go?
So now what you want to do is you want to divide that trailer out of the parcel... Right now, it's part of the parcel where the main house is, correct?
Correct. So we'll legalize that, formalize it, make it stand alone lot, with its own well and septic, you know, zoning compliant lot around that area where the trailer is today. That'll be lot number two.
You're going to keep the trailer?
The intent is to have enough space to develop a single-family home there.
Along with the trailer?
No, no.
Oh, remove the trailer?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question. The parcel that's above up on the hillside, how does that gain access to the road?
There's currently no access. There is...
It's landlocked?
There's what they call the access parcel. There's a parcel that comes along, similar to what for my driveway, those are lot three. It's an access piece, but it is at the rail trail, so there's no physical connection.
There's no way to cross the trailer? So what's...
It's this... It goes way beyond our involvement, you know, it's been like that. I don't know, you know, to cross it today would require approval from...
Act of God.
Yeah.
Well, the only reason why I ask is the... By building those two lots up along that line, you're making it even more difficult for the future, to gain access to the future. And I'm wondering if someone in the future is going to come to us and say, "Hey, I got a landlocked parcel back here, you got to find a way for me to get there."
Right. Whether we, you know, we can do an access easement now rather than, you know, just adjust it that way, because I agree we should have at least some, at least maintain what we have today, but I think an easement might be the better way.
How do you access it now? By foot?
Access what?
It's not developed now.
The other, the land on the other side of the rail trail?
It's all trees.
Yeah, it's steep, it's wooded, there's no...
Okay. There's no reason, yeah.
I was looking...
There may be, there may be a tunnel.
There is a separate parcel there, right?
To give you access on the other side of the rail line.
Is this the Conner Farm?
Yes. Well, okay, it's not the Conner Farm, and that's the whole thing. Lot number two and number three are right on the property line, or the El Conner Farm, basically, as you get down Frog Hollow and you headed towards the hill and the rail trail, if you want it straight on through, that is where the property line is.
Okay.
Is the boundary for this...
So there is a farm crossing, which is...
Right. But the rail trail is not...
...where the existing house is, but it's... That's been there for years.
To get across. At one time, they went over the rail.
So you have to kind of go through one property. I guess that's why they made that two-and-a-half acre access back then, to access the rear 81 acre...
I guess that's why they made that two-and-a-half acre access back then, to access the rear eighty-one acre on the hills.
Is that access just by use?
Is it by one?
Is it an easement, or is it access just by use?
I can grab up the phone.
This is all on the same side of the rail trail, right?
There was always.
This is opposite side of it, right there.
Where's the rail trail?
He uses a little extra line.
See this?
But it goes to that culvert. Is there a cow culvert under there, where they used to run the cows underneath the?
Underneath the rail.
So that's why it comes down here and it goes up to that little culvert right there.
I see, okay.
Lot number three is on the other side of the railroad tracks?
That's not, that's not official.
Like a part of, on the side of the stream.
I didn't think that.
This is the trail here. Okay, you see this? This must be the rail.
Survey, it's on the show.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
The steep slopes are, right, are the mountainside or whatever.
We're right in here.
Right.
Okay.
But that, isn't there potential wetlands in that area?
It's easier to see on the bigger, I know.
D E C wetlands, right?
This is the lower parcel and the rail.
Yeah, flat rock.
Okay.
And then this is his upper parcel.
Which is not used.
Frog Hollow.
No.
Farmer couldn't.
Yeah.
But that's not the opposite.
No.
So you're here before us, under discussion, is that correct?
Yes, we are.
You just want to get us, uh, get an idea from what we, how we feel about it?
Okay, so front.
They're still trying to figure out what's going on. Chair?
Yeah.
So when you're ready, if, I have some comments I could make.
Please.
Okay, so, uh, number one, the access issue is, whenever we come, when a parcel comes before us that was clearly not designed under our current zoning, the, the, there is an old parcel there, and, and we, we try to rectify those issues whenever we can. So I have an issue with, I think you're going to have to somehow figure out how to preserve access to that upper parcel while allowing yourself to build the lots, so I just want you to take that into consideration. Secondly, you're showing what appears to be wetlands, I'm guessing you got that from the environmental mapper. This hasn't been, sir, uh, hasn't been delineated by a wetland specialist, is that correct? Okay, so, yeah, there are all wetlands there and, and indication of wetlands, so as you move forward in the process, you're going to need to, if you read our code, you're going to need to have the wetlands delineated.
They just did that last year. You have the D E C, figure the flags, but I haven't verified that the D E C. I think the D E C is.
Okay.
Oh. Did, you had a wetland restoration special, a wetland specialist delineate them for you?
He came out, the verified it, and then the survey put it on.
So, so don't lose those flags, because you'll have to get them on a survey.
Yeah, okay.
They did that.
Their survey.
Okay.
The verification.
All right, great, you're moving, moving ahead, that's good. Um, I, you know, you're gonna have, it looks like you're going to have to cross the wetlands in order to, not only, even if you weren't subdividing to get that house, there's gotta be, I don't know how you're going to get access up to that lot, which is problematic, because sometime in the future, um, someone can come to us and say, demand, the town, find a way to get them access. And, and so I think we kind of have to figure that out in this process. Maybe, like you say, like an easement of a shared road or something, I don't know what's going to be acceptable to the rest of the board, but, um, you know, that area that's designated on your survey for the access would seem to be, me, at this stage, with the limited amount of information I have, the area where you want to try to keep access to that upper lot. And so with that in mind, your, whatever driveway you're proposing needs to be, it's going to have to be shared for, under some kind of an easement or something like that.
Private road, would we make?
I'm not really sure, yes.
Yeah, I know, I'm not aga, I live on a private road myself, so I'm not against that. Um, but that's up to the whole board, I don't speak for the whole board. So anyway, those are my comments, Chair.
What do you think has to be shared?
He's gonna, he's doing, he's showing a, a long driveway to the house that's closer to the rail.
Mm-hmm.
But that, he's showing it on what's currently designated as access towards the upper lot. So whatever hap, that, we can't just make it a driveway and eliminate its potential as access to the upper lot.
To, to one, lot one, you're saying, right?
To the landlocked lot on the other side.
On the other side.
I understand that, yeah.
So basically, all three would use it, would be lot number three, lot number two, and the other eighty-three acres on there.
Yeah, we show on paper as an easement, whether access ever has to be.
I, I mean, to put it simply, it, the way it's shown now, you're elim, he's eliminating the access to the upper, or the potential for access to the upper.
I thought the access, I thought both sides are, both sides of the rail trail or rail tracks are part of the initial parcel.
No, it's a separate parcel on the, uh, east side of the track.
Uh, sure. So this, this is just a blow-up of this part of it.
Okay.
So there, this, there's this lot and this lot.
Right.
They're only talking about subdividing this lot.
One, yeah, two and three.
To look like that.
Gotcha.
Okay, but if you see on this piece of paper, it's hard to see. There's a, a line right here, there was some effort to make this accessible to the road. This is.
This is a separate tax.
It's a landlocked lot.
I got you.
It's landlocked. It's a prob, it's problematic.
This one.
Now, if he puts his driveway in here, like the way it's shown, then he's eliminating that, that line, that access point, and we can't do that.
How does he get across these, this rail trail?
Well, that's something else that has to be discussed. Do we ask him to speak with Metro North about the potential access? You know, I don't.
Is that?
Why can't the driveway be on the east, on, oh, it's a separate lot?
The driveway can still be there, it just, it can't be exclusive to that lot. It has to be shared for the potential connection further up.
Is this, is this owned by Metro North or the county?
The rail trail?
Yeah.
Metro North?
Well, the, I believe you're referring to the lot, right, Ms. Guido, or no?
No, no, getting access across the rail.
Oh, okay.
I, I think it's, I think Metro North owns it.
I think the railroad maintains ownership and they lease it out to the counties.
I see, okay.
And other counties that have.
It's owned by the M T A, according to this.
M T A owns it.
Okay, so you, that would be a task.
Smart move on the M T A.
Oh, yes, but that would be a task.
Yeah, but they have a hardship, they have a, you know, they, they have no other choice, that M T A has to sort of.
Lose the slots.
But I, I, I've been, at first, I don't want to eliminate, by, by showing the lots the way they are, I don't want to eliminate even the right-of-way. And, and the way it's shown, is it already an easement? It may already be an easement, right, or is it a right-of-way?
The sooner that nature is under easement or that.
Right, so it's already protected, that driveway would be within an, already an easement area. All right, so let's confirm that, right?
I understand, but we can clarify that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's an interesting thing, it's its own tax parcel.
The parcel that would, the zoning for any kind of development other than access, so.
Oh, so, and also, my last comment is, this is a D E C wetland, so you're going to have to go to D E C for a, a wetland permit.
R one thirty-five, R one thirty-five on the other side of the tracks.
Chair?
Sir.
They're going to be required to go to D E C for a D E C wetland permit.
Okay.
Yeah.
And well, you'll, we have a wetland ordinance on our, in our, so you'll be subject to our wetland ordinance as well.
According to our.
Mr. Chair? I also do run the opportunity to satisfy or look at the code, uh, time code, uh, one fifty-five forty-one, which is rear lots. So that, yeah, just want to put you on notice that these lots are within our forty-five, and, uh, rear lots along the path, R ninety, R one thirty-five.
Yep.
Can you expand on that, because it's not a contiguous lot, this.
You also need a hundred-foot of road frontage in the R forty-five.
Yes, that's, uh, I mean, for our ask, yes, that's what we're, we need a variance for. But I'm just, a little, about that rear lot, you know, we, it's not exactly, uh, a rear lot as it is today.
There's a question, though, as to whether or not where Frog Hollow ends, and whether or not this, there's an extension of a private road, roadway into this lot?
Well, they're, they're proposing a driveway, but the driveway will, well, they didn't draw it towards the rail trail. Uh, Rob picked up on the fact that, uh, there would be no access to the rear lot. I'll show you here. It's easier on this. On this one, yeah, it's a little harder on that one. So there's two and three that they're developing here, and this is lot one. Here, the problem is you have the rail trail going between them, and they have a driveway that's going this way and stopping, and you can't get it across the rail trail.
But that lot is using that land.
But if, if.
The proposed lot is.
Yeah.
The, uh, the easement is, or that little parcel that's, that includes a cattle on the pass, right?
It stops at the gates.
Excuse me?
I think it stops at the gates. It's not set gates. Crossing to get up to the other lot.
Excuse me?
It stops at the gate.
Does it set a gate at the railroad track? I think that two-and-a-half acre ends right at those gates.
Who put the gates in?
It's been there for, since we've been there from before.
But the gate, don't, do not the gates allow, if the gates were not there, they allow access underneath the tracks to?
Yeah, that's, there, there's a crossing on the tracks, that's the legal crossing from, that was there from years ago.
Right, there's a cat, a cattle crossing which traveled underneath the tracks.
That's really down further.
That is down further, that's not part of the easement?
Uh, I don't think it goes that far down.
Why would the easement be there?
So the easement that's there is not at the end of the road, it's on this parcel.
Right.
Right.
Okay, but.
And it goes all the way here to a cattle pass, you're right.
All right, so the only purpose of that easement is to allow access to the cattle pass.
I mean, we're speculating, we need to read these.
No, we're not speculating, that's why we're, that's.
There's two crossings, so, I know there's a tunnel that, that we consider the cattle crossing, and then there's a set of gates that was like the legal crossing over the railroad track.
Get the deed?
There's like barriers.
Get the deed. The deed, the deed should tell you.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
You might have to get a match.
Is your name your property here, and is this, is this your property right here? So the right-of-way for Frog Hollow is this one?
Yeah, the deed, there's an easement.
It's further here.
It could be.
Oh, you see?
Yeah.
I doubt.
Yeah, there's about two hundred feet there.
Oh, and this is another one?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
That was a separate lot.
So what you're saying about the rear, which, who you're referring is the rear lot lot?
Yeah, the separate lot.
Rear lot is. Basically a flag lot, it's, town of Beattman Code calls them rear lots, it's a flag lot. So if you have any kind of flag lot, it's prohibited in R forty-five.
So this should be, you know, it's a direct slumber, it's a back, she, like, flare.
Uh, actually, at this point, there is. Right now, there is frontage, because neither lot, lot number two or number three are not subdivided, they are part of lot one. And what I was referring to when I was talking to Fay, when this parcel was initially purchased, and the request to build the house in back, and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, there was a discussion, because the trailer was on the front part of the property, and you desired to build the house in back, and, and for that reason, you want.
It's kind of next to it, it's over here, the trailer will see you and the house.
Yes.
Now, the whole.
Yeah, but that was, that was prior to, yeah.
Then we would have, so this would be like a private road?
That doesn't satisfy bulk area.
And then this will be.
So you mean on your backs?
Why doesn't?
Because a hundred.
Go ahead, please.
This particular area right here is, has to satisfy the bulk area requirements, a hundred-foot frontage.
So this whole area, like, wouldn't be?
No, that can't be factored in.
Your frontage would be.
Because it's a, it's a flag lot.
See that, that's the front of the road there, that's maybe like twenty feet or something.
So what hap, what would happen if they brought the, uh, that boundary on lot number three closer to lot number two?
Three is the one in the back.
Closer?
Well, meaning, meaning make the lot larger.
Because the, the area where the house is, or the flag in this case, I guess you could say borders entirely on neighboring property. So that's considered a rear lot.
So what normally happens on a subdivision is you, if you make a road, then you have frontage, now you can count that frontage.
Right.
And meet your bulk requirements, what you're trying to do is with driveways. And that's, we do, we're trying to do, yeah, we try to do shared driveways where we can, but as designed now, it doesn't meet the bulk area requirements, because it doesn't have the frontage on it. If you've made this a road, correct me if I'm wrong, if you made this a road, then, um, then you'd have frontage on the road, and you could meet that bulk requirement.
It's also, it's only allowed, it's not allowed, it's, it's only allowed in R ninety and R one thirty-five.
Rear lots.
Rear lots.
Yeah, but if you made a road in here, then it wouldn't be a rear lot anymore.
It would have to be a town road.
A town road that would be dedicated.
Doesn't have to be a town, it can be a private.
No, our, our, our definition for frontage, I believe it was frontage, let me see. The linear distance of a lot along a public street road or right-of-way.
Dermot's public street, that parcel, right?
Yeah, so there's a lot of private roads here that exist, but our code doesn't allow it going forward.
That may be private at this, that may be considered as private drive at this point, I don't know, because that's a road that, if it was a road, it was a dead, it was dead-ended at the main, at the main house, right? What would happen, okay, so what they're talking about, what would happen if instead of making the definition to? What would happen, okay, so what they're talking about, what would happen if instead of making the definition to separate lots, you, for lack of a better way of saying it, combine, combine the two lots and then made the, maybe you made lot number two and lot number three a larger parcel. Why, why do you want to keep this on as part of this property?
Yeah, I mean, they take part of the wetland from the tee or attach.
Well, maybe by doing something like that, you can skin the cattle, I don't know. That's up to these.
I don't know, it, it seems to me that you have frontage for two lots. You got two hundred feet, code calls for a hundred footer frontage in R forty-five. But one hundred feet of that frontage is already in that L parcel that's, so you really need to find out if that's able to be taken away and used for a building lot. It might be restricted in the deed or whatnot. There's also like one other, one other thing while we're on it real quick, since this is a dead end road, you have to count up all the number of houses, including Morgan Lane and any others that come down because Frog Hollow Road is a dead end, and you have to meet New York State Fire Code for single, number of single family homes, which I think is thirty, if I, off the top of my head. So if there's, we can't have more than thirty houses off of Frog Hollow and Morgan combined.
Are there any mitigation measures you can take to?
A second means of ingress. So that, you know, I think in the big picture, you know, you got the Faram Farm there, you know, that goes back to two sixteen again, I mean, they're, in the, in the overall picture, but this is kinda, this is kinda locked in the back there with the rail trail, and then you got, you know, behind the, behind them is the active dog site, and then you go up to, uh, Deep Hill.
Well, it's all part of Deep Hill.
So our thing is, we, it's, we have a hundred and sixty acres.
Yeah.
Two lots just for, two houses for family, not looking to sell it, I don't want things there in case you, or forms.
Yeah, that, I mean, it, that's, that's great and all, but unfortunately, we have laws we have to follow, and it doesn't matter, um, who it's for. Really, um, hate to say it that way, but just being honest with you.
Unless you, um, unless you created two lots someplace else on the parcel.
Or you got to zone and change it a lot.
Huh?
Change it to R ninety? Then you could do the flag lot.
It won't be able to, well, you could get the variance.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a number of variances, D E C wetland permits, and check the fire code, check the deed, there's a lot of stuff going on here.
Okay, well, I appreciate the input, that's all I have.
Do the lots have to be where you propose?
Well, this is kinda more out of the way, so we're not interrupting as much of the farm lane. It's kind of right back off to the side, closer to the road, it's at least, uh, in basically, I mean, this is.
Are you farming now?
Put it right in the middle.
Where, where do you farm now?
Uh, it's, it's here, right at the end here.
So in the, in the adjacent areas?
Okay, so this is the wet area through here?
Yeah, that's D E C wetland.
There's another reason why there's such tight flags, you know, just the, it means so many good.
Yeah.
And then we, the remainder of the farms.
What do you grow in your farm, what do you produce?
Uh, basically cabbage.
And wood.
Obviously, you gotta take another look. The wetlands in the middle is a killer, isn't it?
It's a, looks like a beautiful piece of.
Yeah, it's, that's, you know, D E C is tough with that kinda stuff, I mean, they, they would.
Kind of need it, even, even if we didn't do the other lot, we still need to do the crossing.
It seems that way.
Well.
Have the access.
According to Dan, that is, that's already a separate parcel according to here.
Yeah, it's.
I know.
If we do let them, as is, how to get legal access to across the tracks, we would have to make a driveway today through the wetland. That would have our trade work as well.
That's what a four-wheel drive tractor is for.
The D E C might ask you then to say that that parcel will never be built, if you're gonna use it for a driveway for that lot. You know, that might be what they end up saying.
Say that again, uh?
If, if they end up using this, the driveway to cross the D E C wetland, but show the lot where it is shown on the map today, they might say, well, in, in a swap for that, basically, you're gonna give up your right to develop the other land over there. Cause that, that was the access for that land, and now you got one crossing ready, and that's all we'll give you. D E C is, the D E C, I, if they, in, in my experience with the D E C, if you have some reasonable use of the land without touching their wetland or their buffer, that's good enough, and they won't give you a permit. And they might say that there's already a house on here, that's reasonable use of land, and that's that. I mean, they, they're very tough on that.
But are the sto, slopes on the other side of the tracks, uh, steep enough that they wouldn't be able to build?
They're pretty, I don't know, they're pretty steep, they look pretty steep.
I mean, it is buildable, I haven't, uh, uh, we like that, so.
Are you in an ag district? Are you in an ag district, ag district?
Yes.
Doesn't that give you a little latitude?
Sure, I, I think so.
Kinda makes it harder, actually. Seeker, seeker aspects, but.
Yeah, proposed use is not an agricultural use.
Right, I gotcha, okay.
There's no connection between this crop and.
Seems to me, you, you really wanna try to iron out your access to that top parcel, and that might be the key to, um, being able to subdivide the bottom parcel, because you, to get to the back parcel, um, you know, even if you just wanna, it's one lot right now, right, if you wanted to build one house back there, you'd need access to it. So if you, I, I feel like if you went to D E C and said, look, I, I wanna someday just build one house back there. I have a parcel, I have a right to build a house on one parcel, and, uh, I, I just wanna gain access back there. Then you gotta, so the solution might be to build a road to the back, and then work out some agreement with M T A to cross, you know? And, uh.
Well, you said, so yes, for a lot on the, of course, of the lot.
You're not asking D E C for a lot, what you're asking D E C is to cross the wetland to gain you access to that back area. You're also asking M T A to, to give you access to cross.
Well, I wrote them a letter years ago, and they, they said in writing, that's a legal crossing.
Oh, good.
And they actually have signs, like, I write this now, so.
Right, so get that confirmed and codified in a, on a map, or, you know, like an easement or something. And then, then you come to us for a road, you know, and if you build a road, not a shared driveway, now you can alleviate your bulk regulations, okay? And, uh, then you could build the house as you want. But right now, as it stands, to build those, to make that subdivision work on private driveways, it doesn't meet our code, you'd have to go for a variance. Did I say anything incorrect, Dan?
I didn't get all that, but, uh.
Can you go for a variance to do any?
You can always ask for a variance. You know, that's, it's always an option.
But if you build, if, is the big problem the fact that there's not enough road frontage? And that there's a rear lot because there's not enough road frontage? So if he were to build a road, I'm just spitballing here, if he built a road, if he had all the approvals, D E C agreed, then now he's got more frontage for those lots, is that correct?
But the town would have to accept the road for it to be a road.
I'm just, right now, I'm just spitballing, it would be a public road.
Like a partial cul-de-sac of some sort into the property that gives, you know, three hundred feet, let's say, cause then you have a hundred for each lot.
Yeah, so that's where we're, you have to attack the problem, cause you don't have enough frontage. So, the way you get, way most subdivisions get frontage is not by dumping a bunch of, funneling a bunch of driveways down to the road, they have to bring the road up end, then they all have frontage on a new municipal road. So I think if you wanna proceed, that's the direction you wanna think about, that's just my opinion.
Create a, a tap, a roadway, a cul-de-sac that is spat to town highway specifications.
Right.
That's what would have to happen.
It's tough, cause you, then you're eating into the usable part of the land, cause there's, the D E C buffer starts coming into play.
Do the houses?
My neighbor, right, they have to start a road, three houses, I think it's four houses.
But that pre-existed zone?
Yeah, there was some extensive research on that, yeah, that private road is there.
But we have provisions for a shared driveway.
Yes, yes, but you still have to have the, the frontage and all that.
Yeah.
This is for family use? Why not put them, why not do it on another part of the parcel? Where you would, right now, the only access to that parcel basically is the driveway to the house that you built. Right?
But there's, so, so basically, it's two lots, there's the, the eighty-three acres that the house is on, and then there's the two and a half acre that comes to the front, the bulk of those, that hundred feet on the road.
Right.
The, okay, the, where's the two and a half acres?
That's the L.
The L shape.
That's.
But they're not under common ownership, so you would have to get them under common ownership.
It's, it's this little thing up here.
No, but right now, all I see is trust.
See, here you go.
Alright, yep, I, I understand.
I'll highlight it. The red.
Okay, but the red is, they own the red?
Yeah, it's under Pezzuto. The eighty some odd is under an estate.
It's a class.
A trust. And then the, the one on the other side of the tracks is under Pezzuto.
Right, that I, that I understand. It's hard to screen like that.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
You would need unity of ownership. You don't, they don't have it at the moment, but that's fixable.
And the only, and the only, the only way.
Yeah, the only thing we don't know is if, if that two and a half acres, that L shape can be, conveyed separate and apart from the eighty acres, because of what, what they'd be doing is creating a landlocked parcel, which is not legal, not preferred.
What about making a deal with your neighbor, uh, what's the land like on the other side of that stone wall that's on, uh, O'Connor's property?
So they just build the house there that they might, three or four acres to get permanent, but it's the limit for the amount of space. That's a five acre lot.
Yeah, a lot of it is wetland. Yeah.
Yeah, I know. Dermits house, you're saying, did they rebuild that, or?
No.
They just put up a rear house.
New house there, yeah.
On, on Dermits?
Right, that was the five acres closest to Frog Hollow.
That was a struggle.
Right, and then across the street from Dermits is part of the.
I thought they sold that.
She's, she's in O'Connor over there, and this is Mary Doreen Trustee.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see any notes on the filed map that say anything about that little L, other than it says ingress. And egress is a lot too.
You're saying that little L lot is an actual lot? It's not an easement?
It's, it's an actual lot, yeah. Yeah. That one has a hundred footer frontage to Frog Hollow. The L. It's nineteen point four plus eighty point six right here, that's the frontage right there. Right, correct.
Right, it's up here, you need it.
Is that under paid for the upward lot, so if we build a lot, we'll down low.
You can't have a flag. Yeah, it's considered a rear lot, it's legal in that zone, district, like a block.
But it stands now, we, we got the driveway to come to the other side of the tracks to access our legal lot.
My SIG, I have a SIG three sixty-five, it's ten plus one.
Right. It's shown as lot three, this was part of the subdivision over there on the other side.
This lot is lot three.
Yeah. That's not what the easement's for, it says easement for ingress and egress to lot two. From what?
Of the tracks, right?
No, lot, that's lot three on the map.
On whose?
The filed map. See, that says lot three, eighty-three point oh seven acres. There's the tracks. This thing says easement for ingress and egress to lot two, this is lot two.
This is lot one, right here, right here?
No, it's actually lot two.
Go back.
See this right here? It says lot two there.
Where's it say lot two, goodbye, just don't see.
It's underneath this, right here, it says lot two right there. But this was its own, I mean, it says it's the easement, but it's shown as a parcel.
And this says.
So confusing. Yeah, it's the name, that doesn't make any sense at all. Where's lot one on this thing? Oh, so lot one is the Faram Farm. That's, there was three lots here, yeah. Well, no, lot one is, on the filed map, is, is the Faram Farm. That's Doc Sanford. Lot three is the one on the hill, lot two is the one with the house on it now. And then that L that was created, it says easement for ingress and egress to lot two. I wonder if that was meant to be, to say to lot three?
Yes, common sense tells you that that's what it was, because of the design of the lot.
But maybe the deed says it better.
Yeah, we need a deed, we need an aspect.
Something. You cut those houses too. I don't know how many there are.
If we just wanna have one lot where the trail runs now, but if you take the lot, the two acre lot with the, with the frontage, can we take some land off of lot one? A lot line with the alignment, would we be able to do that?
We'll have to see in the deed if we're allowed to modify.
So if we could just add like four or five acres from this, this, which one is the one with the house on this one? And then add to the two acre lot to give us enough, uh, to give us enough acreage to build a house? I mean, that's, cause my parents, you know, and it's, the trust is to my sister and I, so basically, I, we, I'm gonna own this, I have, yeah, this lot too, so it's basically all the way.
Yeah, it's a land hook.
Right, exactly, they were supposed to be...
Supposed to be one.
Okay, this is the parcel right here, right?
So what, what Craig just noticed on here is that there's a land hook.
There's a what?
There's a land hook from this to this, meaning that this is supposed to be part of the parcel. No. But maybe that's why it still says easement for ingress and egress to lot two, because it was supposed to be part of lot three. But it was still ingress and egress to that part of lot two, that field, the upper field. Or I don't know what you call it, but the field on the other side of the wetlands. You know?
Yeah.
Maybe that, maybe the, the note on here is actually right.
So maybe, maybe what you really need to do is go back and read the deed.
Yeah.
A deed, a deed in the, in the filed map because...
I mean, the, you know, the county when they, they took this map might have...
The county might have screwed up.
They might have screwed it up.
Because, because of the railroad. They might have just put that line in when actually, when Sanford created it, he created it obviously with the intent so that you would be, you would be able to...
It gives it frontage to Frog Hollow. Yeah.
You know what it is?
It's turning into a little discussion, right?
Correct me if I'm wrong. But like a town road through your property will create two separate parcels.
Yeah, it's like a de facto subdivision to, to X town. I mean, you could have the land hook that connects them still, it could be one deed, but...
But that's, uh...
Land hook is for, um, personal identification as, as, um, taxable, as a relation to keep them together, taxable. You know, parcel, that's basically what it's for. And it can, it's usually traversed by a road, or in this case, by the rail trail.
But and the, the split of the, the MT, the railroad, because that's what it was at the time, is what has created this... You know, and I would...
They're not giving me an opening.
You could see what they did here, they, see that jog right there into the Faram Farm? The reason they did that is to give a hundred foot of frontage for each of the two lots. That's why, it was intended for two lots. Hundred foot for lot two, hundred foot for lot three. That's why that jog is there in that lot line. The road is here, it basically takes that ninety degree turn. There's like the minor cul-de-sac and then it turns into a private road.
Sanford filed?
Yeah, they're back in two thousand and four.
Because going, going by the county...
I went with something...
They may, when they do this parcel access, they may have put that line in there.
Don't, please. I'll stay still.
Simply because of the, of the railway, the railway. Maybe, maybe the, um...
It's, it's literally the whole, it's hard, like you can do it.
So you don't want to hold it like this?
No. But if I, if I, you know...
Yeah.
They're not in it.
It's got quite a kick.
They have a little inset here, but it's more to show this whole area, but... It almost seems, did you, now, when you just said the lot line may align it, were you saying about...
I'll make sure I call first.
Realign the...
Cliff, how you doing?
Kick it out to encompass, so there'll be a lot going down below. Have a continued...
Say that again?
The town wanted to do a lot line to be aligned to go around the trail. To make a trail.
What do you say with closing the meeting, you guys can continue with the work session?
Sounds good.
Is that all right? What would you like to do?
I don't want to interfere with the process, it's just there's filming going on and other things, we're not... Definitely violated many rules.
Yeah.
That's what I was kind of asking you, but I don't, I don't mind.
Well, it's a pre-application, so it's... It's really, so there's not even an escrow set up or anything, it was really more for you guys, but we just started hopping in with some stuff that we're seeing as we're sitting here, so...
We got lost.
Yeah.
Yeah, Bobby's there.
The process, yeah. No, I'm not looking to end this for you, I just, the filming is going on, I just think it would be best...
Okay, so Mr. Chairman.
Motion to close this meeting.
I make a motion that we, uh, close the, uh, October twentieth, uh, planning board meeting?
Thank you, do I have a second?
Excuse me, one second. Um, may I just speak? I'm not married.
Pardon me?
Um, may I just speak?
This isn't a public hearing.
Oh, it's a public hearing?
No, it's not a public hearing.
Oh, no, no, I know, I want to talk about my application that I submitted.
Uh, you're not on the agenda, though.
I know, but I'm just wondering why I'm not on the agenda, because I submitted the application.
You'll have to take that up with the planning board, I mean, the, uh, the building department. Uh, we're going to close the meeting right now and, uh, I can't entertain any comments from the public right now.
But I'm just wondering why, um...
Uh, second to the motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, meeting is closed.